Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for acceptance of the, a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the April 11th, 2023 meetings.
So moved second.
It's been moved in second discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries public forum for this evening. No one? We'll move on to presentations. A call to the podium, Mr. Ron Chason, Winter Sports.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a short presentation tonight, sort of highlighting and giving you the board some facts on the winter sports season. And here we go. There were 124 students participated in winter sports. That's all teams from modified JV varsity. I want the board to know the numbers you see reflected, that's how many were on each team. The tryouts were huge. Fifty modified boys trying out for the basketball team, almost as, not that many in the girls' modified, but that many in both the boys' and girls' varsity JV. And I want to just say, though it's not springtime, the springtime turnout has been unbelievable. We've worked hard. We're trying to promote athletics, we're showing videos of games and highlights. We're trying to get it on the TV and radio station and just give the students the rest, some of the recognition they deserve, they work so hard. So my compliments to the coaches who are working equally hard. And I think there's been some, we're seeing some results, so we're happy about that. But those are the numbers on each team. And we had five varsity teams. Three were named to the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, if you recall from, from the fall and from last year. That's the organization that oversees all sports in New York State, for all schools. So we had three teams that were named Scholar-Athlete Teams, meaning seventy-five percent of the team, I could, I had to count seventy-five percent of the team. If there were twenty athletes on the team, I had, I could, I had to take fifteen of them, do their average, grade point average, for the second marking period. And, and the team average had to be ninety or above. So three of the five teams, the girls' basketball team had a team average of over ninety. The boys' indoor track team had a team average of over ninety. And the girls' indoor track team also had an average over ninety. We're, we're close. And we've been, when I say we, the athletic department, all the coaches, we meet, we talk about, how can we support our student athletes in the classroom, as well as on the field? So we brainstorm ways to support them. We're really for all teams, although only varsity teams are recognized for this Scholar-Athlete Award. But we do the same thing for the modified teams, the JV teams. We're really striving. We set as a goal, we'd love to be recognized as this athletic school of excellence. And we have a shot at it. So we have to have seventy-five percent of our total teams have a ninety average or above. And we've got a live shot going into the spring season. I won't know till the end of, oh, the marking period ended, I think, this week. So in about two weeks, I'll know. It won't be announced till June, but I'll know what I'm turning in. So we're, we're going to be close and I, I've got my fingers crossed. We might be recognized as a school of excellence, which would be really terrific. Everyone's worked hard to see that happen, including the athletes, though. But moving on, twenty-eight students did receive an academic average. So even if your team did not receive a team academic, if you personally had a ninety average or above, you received a Scholar-Athlete Award. And maybe Superintendent Wiles wants to come up and just, I've got some names here. And we'll call up, I'm really thrilled to introduce to the board these twenty-eight. I know, and I think you know from past reports, how, how, how difficult it is to be traveling, sometimes two hours to Weebatack or Pine Plains in the middle of the week, and you've got work to do and you come back. And, and so I'm, I'm honored really to call up these students. Thanks. So if you're in the audience, please come up. We have a little certificate to recognize you. And so I'll just, let me take them and I'll, I'll give them to you. Okay. So we'll start. Amelia Benjamin. Why don't we, just in the, in the, for time, let's hold our applause till we get them all up here. We'll, we'll give them all a, a, a round of applause at the end. Anthony Murdock. Billy McGaw. Cassius Gray. All right, Cassius. Caden McQuillan. Great job. Christian Zalinski. Awesome. Elijah Robinson. Ellie Anderson. Emily Chipman. Evan Levine. Great job, Evan. Gabriella Castro. Gassiana Walters. Jalen Sultani. Stick around, Jalen. Jeremy Brazze. Jessica McHugh. Got her sticks. We'll, we'll deliver it. Jessica's on the injured reserve list right now from softball, with a ankle injury sadly. Jonathan Coniker. Justin Coniker. Mariah Kinsey. Matthew Van Mader. Michelle Wang. Nathan Town. Rihanna Collins Cox. Riley DeShawn. Scott Ramos. Great. Skyler Davis. And Victoria Bonnet. So those are our Scholar-Athletes. Everyone, great job. Left off too. Adriana Anderson. And Alan Ibric. Sorry. Okay. Yes. There'll be more coming in a bit. Moving on, just a few highlights from different teams. Girls' basketball had a, a great season. They were ten and seven, ten and six, they finished the season. Got an invitation to sectionals where they lost, so they wound up overall ten and seven. They had a terrific home record. It's six wins and two losses, including a couple of really thrilling wins over very good teams. They won the first annual Rumble in the Valley. We might have to change the name next year, Superintendent Wiles says. But we held a basketball tournament, boys and girls. And they, they won that, so that was great. They were invited to sectionals. And some players received some, some honors. I'd like to call up Jalen Sultani, who was an MH, made the MHAL, the league we play in, the Mid-Hudson Athletic League, All-Star Team. And she was also, as you can see, number five at Kingston Freeman on the Kingston Freeman Team, which includes all levels from Class A to Class D, all schools in Section Nine. She made honorable mention on the Kingston Freeman Team. So Jalen, come on up. Thank you. Also, from the girls' basketball team, Adriana Anderson made the Mid-Hudson All-Star Team. She was also a Kingston Freeman Honorable Mention. And she made the Section Nine, Class B Top 50 Player. So from our Section Nine, a top, the top, they just give an award to the top fifty players in Section Nine. So Adriana, you in the audience? We'll get these to her. But that was the girls' basketball. It was exciting. They have a lot of good players back, and I think they'll have a good year next year, so. Boys' basketball team had an exceptional season. They won sixteen games and lost three during the season. Of the three, one was by one point. Another was by, I think, three points. And one they lost, they got beat. But they went to sectionals. They also won the first annual basketball tournament. They also got an invite to Section Nine. Down a point in the, late in the third quarter, I don't know, they closed us down in the fourth quarter at Red Hook. But of the fourteen players on that team, twelve returned. And I think they're going to be a hot team next year. I don't want to put pressure on them, but I think you'll see a really good product to come out and watch in basketball. And we had some, some four players that won awards. I'd like to call off, if he's here, Christian Jackson, was a Kingston Freeman Honorable Mention. Is Christian here, KJ? Devon is here, Douglas. Rad Marino, Rad here, was third-team Kingston Freeman All-Star, and he made the Class B All-Star Team in Section Nine. So Rad is not here. Of the four players listed, Rad's the only senior. The other three are returning, along with a host of others. Jason Kinsey, special basketball player, happy to say he's a junior, so he'll be returning. He made the Class B All-Star Team in Section Nine. Is Jason here? Jason Kinsey? Nope. Sorry. He was first-team Kingston Freeman. And he'll be back next year, and that's Jason. They got one more team to talk to you about, really, the girls' indoor track team. And they had a great season. They had a lot of fun. And we are blessed with a young lady on the indoor track team who set a school record in the fifty-five meter dash. That's the time, seven forty-seven, said Ellenville High School record. She set a school record in the three-hundred meter dash. She set a school record in the high jump at five foot nine, just as a, I used to be five-eleven. I've probably shrunk about an inch with aging. She's jumping just, if I just ducked that much, she's dumping over my head, so that's pretty incredible. She was the OCIA. We play in indoor track, we play in the Orange County League. That's the only sport we play in Orange County League. She was a Division Four champ in the high jump and the three-hundred meter. In Section Nine, she broke a record that was set in nineteen seventy, high jumping five foot nine inches. She went to the New York State Championships, she came in second in New York State, with, not at five-nine. She didn't jump five-nine that day. Everybody was off a little, from what I understand, from the coach. The next week, she placed eleventh in the nation in the high jump. And that five-foot-nine that she jumped during the year was the sixth-best high jump in the country. She'll soon be signing a Division One Full Ride Scholarship. Here's the good news. That was indoor track. Spring track is underway. And I have to tell you, I wasn't a track athlete when I was younger. I played basketball and soccer. But I love going to these track meets. There's so many different things going on. And I was at one last year. Going through this Saturday, they're playing in Rondell, it'll be pretty much all day. So I'm going to go. And I was at one last year, and at one point, this, they had a, like the hundred-yard dash, hundred meters now, I think. And this kid from, from Rondell just shot out of the gate like a, he, he just took off like it was a blur. And before I knew it, I was on my feet with everybody else. And I was sitting with a bunch of our kids in, in the stands, you know, they'd already competed. And they said, Mr. Chason, he's like, he's a New York State champ. It was thrilling. So you want to thrill, go watch track meet. There's, they're jumping, they're running, they're throwing things, there's all kinds of events going on. It's like, it's like a free-for-all. And Amelia, come on up and receive several awards. It's pretty, pretty incredible. So you still have time to go watch Amelia in the spring season, that's the happy news. You don't get someone doing the things she's doing all that often. Thank you, Amelia. So I got one more slide after this to the board. The Ellenville program, sports program, athletic program is, is making us proud again. These were some great accomplishments this winter, from the basketball and the track. And it was thrilling for me to be part of it. I want to thank the athletes who are here and all the athletes who are not here. Being the AD, I get to go around, and it's not something I did in my career, an athletic director, I was in other areas. It's fascinating to watch, how hard they work. And thank you, athletes. I also want to thank Salvatore Maciel, the board hasn't seen these, but all of these certificates they're getting are made by Mr. Lukaszewski's graphics and design class, really by, primarily by Salvatore. They're beautiful, they're sports-specific. If it's basketball, it's, there's something basketball-y on it, or if it's track, or whatever, if it's girls' basketball. So Salvatore, if you're listening, thank you, and the teacher, Mr. Luke, for all their efforts. And they do this, and they did it in the fall, too. Our Booster Club is terrific. I remember John Burns starting it way back, meeting in my office when I was the principal here, or at least maybe not starting it, but getting it going again, perhaps. But they decorate things for us, they, they, they have little goodie bags when we send teams to sectionals. They're always doing a little something to make it special, and I just want to publicly thank them. I also want to thank Superintendent Wild and Deputy Superintendent Wright and Assistant Soup for Business, Mr. Napoli. Sports isn't our main reason here, but those three understand it has a lot to do with the spirit around here, and they're very supportive. And sometimes people don't realize that, but I do, so thanks. And finally, to the board, thank you who make it happen. I know how much you folks care, because I know how you grow me all year long on things, so. And, and I'm always happy to share whatever I can with you that I, that I know. So thanks to all of those who make all these great things happen, really, for our kids. So thanks again. And finally, because I know you're interested in this, a quick review. I am loving the elementary intramural program that we started this year. Just wanted you to know that we got it going. Remember, we have five different six-week sessions, but by the time we got it going this year, we only had time for three of the five. We had the first one, soccer. It's forty stu, the third and fourth grade on Mondays, Wednesdays, fifth and sixth grade on Tuesdays, Thursdays. They're sold out. It was sold out. Forty students was the max. It's max, it was maxed out. In the winter, it averaged about thirty a day. You had illnesses in the winter, and colds, and whatever. I went to several skill-based, working on skills, playing soccer-related games, maybe small-sided games, little races with the soccer ball, a lot of skill work. It's going to pay dividends in the, in the very near future, I'm certain. Right now, we're in basketball. The basketball coach said, Mr. Chason, the two instructors for, it's incredible. I mean, no one misses. We're averaging thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty's the max. We usually have forty, you know, maybe one or two are absent from school that day. They called this morning and said, you know, it's in the elementary, this is for the fifth and sixth grade, we're going four-on-four. Now we're starting to play games. They've done a lot of skill work on basketball skills. They, they've really progressed. I've watched it myself. And they said, we're playing four-v-four, because we're playing cross-court instead of the big court. And it's, it's all you can handle is four-on-four. We'd like to go one extra week. It ends next Friday, is the last day of the six weeks. Then we have two weeks off while we do sign-ups for the last session, which goes another six weeks. So we got two weeks of downtime, if you would. They're asking if they could go another four days. They can bring fewer fifth and sixth graders each day, but they'll still get the same amount of time, and they can go five-on-five and go full court. So they're asking for an extra week. I don't know. Superintendent said I could bring it up to you and ask and beg for four days.
Is there any board member that objects to this?
You certainly put pressure on us by doing it in front of the large audience, but I think we'll all say yes.
Sorry.
Anybody not in favor of this? If not, Ron, you have our blessing.
Awesome. It's Ben.
We will get a resolution up so that we can get it approved.
Okay. Yeah, just in closing on this, the kids are having a ball. I mean, they're having a ball. The, the instructors are thrilled. I think we're going to have more instructors interested for next year. And it's going to, it's one of the things I'm really happy we started this year, and thank you.
Ron, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work. If we could have a round of applause for Ron Chason.
Thank you.
And to the athletes, on behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly congratulate you. You've made us proud, you made Ellenville proud, you made your parents proud, caretakers, and the whole community proud. And we hope you keep up the good work. But mostly, I'd like to have the students give their caretakers and parents a round of applause, because they put a lot of work into you to make you what you are today. While I know you really want to stay and watch the rest of this meeting, I bet you you have homework to do, so we're going to take a five-minute recess, allow you to leave. Thank you. Come to order. I will now call up to the podium Mrs. Nicole I and Rebecca Ma, with Envision K6 Math Program.
Good evening. I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to come, and Rebecca here also will be here for questions or anything that we might have moving forward with the K6 math curriculum process that we just did in the elementary from last June to now. And I just want to walk you through, I'm not sure I'm going to follow up Mr. Chason's with, with the students, so kudos to all those students. Being an athlete myself, I know the hard work that goes into that, so kudos to all of them. So I just want to walk you through the math pilot process that we had, which took place starting in June of twenty-two. So again, the math pilot process started in June of twenty-two, and until now, we really wanted to begin to focus, now that we have two years under our belt, with the HMH Into Reading Program. It was time to begin our focus in the math. So just some key ideas to take away from tonight. Our math competency is essential for life and work moving forward, those basic math facts and computations that we use every day. Large math competency gaps before the pandemic were there, but after COVID, we've seen a widening of them. And we really want a new program to emphasize on differentiation to address those gaps that our students are having. What we're currently using right now are the New York State modules, which are based on the Common Core, with supplemental materials. It's inconsistent between grade levels. We really want to have a K6 consistency program now, with sixth grade coming down, it's the time to have everything really be consistent. And the iXL we're supplementing. So what we're really seeing across the grade levels is K6 using the, the New York State modules, but the inconsistency of implementation among the grades. So why now? I'm just going to go into a little bit more detail. A vertical alignment between K6 is really important, since we are one grade level now, and combining everything, consistent, high-quality math across the grade levels is extremely important. From year to year, to have that same consistency with vocabulary is very important. Teachers need resources below and above grade level, so we can have intervention and enrichment for students within the math. And New York State had identified, this is not new news, but in 2020, 2021, a targeted support school. And we, the elementary is kind of on the cusp for that. And we, the elementary is kind of on the cusp for that, so we're hoping with these new programs, we can align everybody and move forward to the growth that we need for our students. And how I said, the modules were the Common Core modules. We're moving forward to the next-generation standards, so a new program would be aligning to the next-generation standards also. So I'm going to walk you through the timeline and exactly how we got to the process here. We wanted to give our teachers the opportunity in a pilot process for them to actually have a voice. So in June of 2022, it was open to all student, or all staff or all teachers to participate in the math pilot. We had twenty-two teachers volunteer, teachers in all grades, K through six, volunteer. So twenty-two teachers. So from September to October, the teachers reviewed materials from five nationally-recognized math programs. And then October of 2022, teachers reviewed materials from those programs, and the Pilot Math Committee or Pilot Math Team came together to pick two of the five programs. And the programs that they chose were the HMH Into Math and Envision's Math. So from November to December, the teachers participated in professional development. They began to implement the program if they were ready. And then in January of '23, this past January, the official pilot began. And with that, they had the opportunity for informal collaboration during faculty meetings and grade-level meetings. Two full days of small groups where teachers met as teams to share feedback and discuss the programs' pros, cons, and current needs of the programs. Notes from all the meetings were shared with all twenty-two pilot members, so they could always go back to see what everybody was saying. Very transparent, we want to be with this process with the teachers. And at the end of March, the teachers came together as the pilot participants and rated the two programs, Envision Math and HMH Into Math, on a one-to-four scale rubric, based on a bunch of different topics. I'm just going to name a few. The opportunities for a small group and learning centers, student engagement, and support for math facts and literacy were a few of the rubric components that they voted on. So the score for the HMH Into Math score was a 1.8 out of four, and the score for the Envision's Math was a 2.9 out of four. The teachers' consensus was that no math program was going to be absolutely perfect, but Envision's had a great resource to build upon, and then it was voted unanimously to bring to the curriculum committee. So at the April Curriculum Committee meeting, unanimously it was presented, and then unanimously voted to recommend Envision Math to Superintendent Wild. So that's kind of the timeline of where we were from last June to now. Just some feedback, I'm not going to read everything up there, but I will just highlight a few. They felt the program was the online, you know, a lot of components have gone online, and some of the platforms are very difficult to navigate. They felt this program was easily navigatable for students. Lessons and videos highlighted interaction and entertaining for students to play back for extra practice, high-level thinking, and reteaching and challenging components were there for students. So moving forward with an Envision Math program for the '23-'24 school year, our recommendation, we have right now an eighty-minute instructional block for math, two forty-minute instructional blocks. What we would like to see at the elementary building for next year would be the Envision Math block, the forty-minute with the Envision lesson, which would be a mini lesson, followed by a small group and independent practice where students can do, like, you know, we do, you do with the practice. And then the other forty minutes to go back to math facts practice, where we're really starting to drill down, where, you know, those flashcards and those around-the-world, just to really drill in the math facts. And for continued small group for reteaching and independent practice, so we can do some enrichment and intervention during that second forty-minute block, just to break it down, that eighty minutes. So I just wanted to be as transparent as possible with the programs, and this is a year-one adoption. So the program materials for the year-one adoption is the $63,000 with the professional development coaching, that's year one. That is not something that is moving forward, which will be, you know, year two, the professional development may be here and there, but we're going to really hit home with the professional development in the beginning of the school year, maybe offering some over the summer for curriculum, and then in September, for those of that didn't have it in the summer. And then shipping costs, and then the total cost is $108,008.13 for the program.
Questions from the board at all at this point? Mr. Quon?
I have a couple. Thank you for that. How are we defining high quality? I keep hearing a lot of that in education, and I haven't got a good definition of what high quality is.
So a high-quality program would be something that has different components for all our students, so interventions, enrichment, practice, not just focused on direct instruction. So we really want to have high quality where it's engaging for the students.
And how are we assessing that?
So there'll be math assessments that we'll put in place. There'll be some part of the program, just like we do for the reading with the Fontaine St. Peneau. We plan to do some diagnostic, three-times-a-year testing also.
And how are we doing the diagnostics, or what tools?
It would probably be an online program that we would use. Part of this, it'd be built in with this program.
How are the kids receiving this new math curriculum? Because if we were doing good before COVID, or were we doing decent before COVID, we found some spots where we needed to tidy things up, change the curriculum, how are the kids doing? Are they grasping it?
So what do you, like, what do you, right now?
Right. So we got feedback from the teachers, but what about the kids? How are the kids doing?
So this was just the feedback from the pilot program.
Okay.
For the, so there was about nine or ten teachers or so that piloted this program. So I would be able to come back to you in like November or December and give you feedback from the students also. I could go back to SM for those that piloted it, but it wouldn't be the whole building.
Okay. So we would have some comparative numbers to look at.
Sure. Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
So my understanding is the monies from this program are coming from our ARC funds, correct, Vince?
American Rescue Plan funds, correct.
And they're going to be, that's federally funded. Any other questions, Mr. Burns?
You mentioned, Nicole, that the, in the beginning, I didn't catch the reasoning behind it, but you said that it wasn't across all, like there was an inconsistency. Did that have anything to do with the fact that we reconfigured the elementary school last year?
It could, yes. They definitely had different programs that they were using in the sixth grade, but I think through the modules where the, before I had come to the elementary building, there was different programs that they were using. And then when the modules rolled out, everybody went to that, and then it kind of was like a modge-podge of everything kind of put together. There was no consistent math program that they had.
So you think by doing this program consistently, K-6 will see some improvement?
Definitely.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Jody?
So like the reading program, are we going to have this as our program? No other programs will be using, correct?
Yes. Fidelity, 100%. Yep.
And how are we ensuring that?
The observations, walkthroughs, assessment tools.
Anybody else? There will be, there is a resolution, so refresh your screens, please. There'll be a resolution coming up on this. Anybody have any other questions for Mrs. I? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I think we're done with our presentation. Okay, we'll move on to board reports and correspondence. I'd just like to address the newspaper article that appeared in the Schwanggang Journal in regards, in relation to our approved budget. A lot of times, when you read something, a lot of times headlines are eye-catching, right? Sometimes we, we don't even read the article. Sometimes we just look at the headlines and we just take that as gospel and we move on. We don't look into the nuts and bolts or the meat and potatoes of the article. In the article that was written about the budget, it said that, you know, the budget was seven percent. It's not, that's not a false. That's not false. It's true, but there is more to it. The growth of the budget, while at seven percent, is not actually, and Vince can chime in on this, is not actually the tax rate. The tax rate, Vince, was what?
4.52%.
And where does that fall in relation to the tax cap?
That is under the tax cap by half a percent.
That's correct. So to those that read the article and are under the impression that their taxes are going to raise, rise by seven percent, that is not accurate. It is actually, we are actually below the tax cap, as we have been consistently for a number of years, and as we will always fight to try to continue to be. So while, while the headline might have been eye-catching, and it was and has a tendency to be misleading, unless you read, and it's a misnomer, unless you read further into the article and see what the actual facts of the article are, and that is that we certainly are well below the tax cap, and I just wanted to, I got a lot of questions on it in the last week that it's been out, and I just wanted to clarify that for everybody that's out there in our social media and also in our TV land. And I'd like to also thank the athletic department for the presentation tonight. It's always good to see how our athletes are achieving and, you know, going forward, and especially during these tough times sometimes. Other board members? If not, move on to student representative, Mr. Jack Henry.
All right, so the Junior-Senior High School Student Council will be hosting a village cleanup on Saturday. Everybody will meet at 11 o'clock at Liberty Square. Students in grades three through eight will be taking their New York State exams for ELA tomorrow and Thursday. All ninth-grade students had lunch in the library today and had a presentation for the Go Beyond Greatness program. And the Class of 2025 is hosting a badminton tournament on Friday at 5:00. Admission is $20, and we can't wait to see everyone show off their badminton skills. No update on athletics, as teams continue to have successful seasons. And finally, for fundraising, it's never too late, although it's getting a little late. We're almost in May. To purchase your Blue Devils merchandise, you can buy yours using the link Junior-Senior High School Student Council Blue Devils Gear, or you can use a QR code.
Thank you very much, Jack. Always informative. So we'll move on to our superintendent, Ms. Lisa Wiles.
So just a couple of things. At the last board meeting, there was a question about getting more Bosse's programs here, sharing them with Rondow. Had initial conversations with Jonah Shanker, the district superintendent. There was also questions about New Visions, and while the New Visions program was low, we had, we did have one student participating in New Visions, and next year, I think we have seven or eight. So they are really trying to open up those programs to everybody. It's not going to be a competitive, selective process, but if you have an interest in participating, we're trying to, you know, encourage students to do that. We're also trying to see if we can run the New Visions education, a portion of it down here, so that, we did that once with health. So wherever we can provide a program down here, you know, we're talking about it, and I'll continue to talk to Dr. Morgan from Rondow about that. Some programs would be cost prohibitive, like an auto mechanic program down here, where there's so much equipment and the investment would be so great, but we are looking into whatever we can do down here, so that students have the opportunity to come and not participate, excuse me, and participate and not have to travel. I did attend the Ulster County Annual Meeting, Ulster County Bosse's Annual Meeting, it's a great event. The students prepared dinner. It was done a little bit differently than they had, well, they did, I think it last year, but they had stations, you went through the kitchen. It was really good for the annual meeting. They did a great presentation of the budget. Just a reminder that Tuesday, May 2nd, 5:00 here, we have the Athletic Master Field Planning Meeting, and I'm just passing these out. We're going to update this, put it in the board doc library. It's dates to remember, so Mr. Pavone is putting a letter out to parents tomorrow. The high school team is about things that are coming up with regard to Regents, Regents' Review, AIS programs, so that parents and the community has a look at all of the, you need more?
One more.
Okay. Sorry about that. So included in the letter that parents are getting is a list of junior-senior high dates to remember. And I know in the past, the boards asked for something like this, so we're going to be asking Mrs. I to put a list like this. You can put it on your refrigerator or enter it into your phone, and we'll keep updating it. We'll put it in your library in board docs so that you have it, but I'm sure there's a few things that have to be added, or things will come up. So just, that's what I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Vince Napoli.
Thank you. Earlier today, Deputy Superintendent White and I took a walk back to the construction zone. The walls are going up, it's actually starting to look like a cafeteria. And last week, Mr. Henry attended a meeting with our food service consultant, working on the bid specs for our new, for our food service contract that's coming up due for the upcoming school year. And Mr. Bigley told me, and he told the superintendent, that this was one of the best-received, well-attended, and great feedback he's ever experienced, meeting with students over the food service program. Some great things came out of that meeting. Jack, I think a couple of things that we talked about was cheesy breadsticks, increasing the portion size of the cheesy breadsticks, that was big. Do you remember what else came out of that?
We were talking about what foods we liked, what we can see on the menu more, and what we would like to see out there in terms of food, like, for example, the cheesy breadsticks. They were coming in packages of two, and students were pretty much saying, we can't run with that. So like, if we can add another cheesy breadstick in there, then students would prefer that.
So, so we added that to the bid specs for next year, things like if a student is lactose-intolerant, they can get two juice boxes rather than one, because usually it's one milk or juice, so they'll be able to get 16 ounces of juice rather than just eight ounces. So we talked about the little things that make it important for the students, and one of the things that, that we wanted to talk about, and if you could remember, Jack, to do it during the morning announcements, to encourage our students to eat breakfast. A lot of kids didn't know that breakfast was free, although we talk about it, there's a sign-up in the lobby. Maybe, Jack, you can mention it. Over the next couple of days, you don't have to do it every day, but every once in a while, just, just remind the kid they can come to school, they can have breakfast, it's free, and they can get breakfast after the bell, and they can take it to their classroom rather than have to sit in the cafeteria and miss their first-period class, and that's K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Deputy Superintendent, Mrs. Kelly White.
Good evening. I just wanted to give an update on our pre-K timeline. So for families, the lottery application is posted on our social media pages and also our district website. There was a delay with bulk mailing, so we did release the application digitally, and if we can get the bulk mailing situated, we'll also be doing a mailing. But there were also letters that went home in students' backpacks to make them aware. So right now, the tentative lottery closing date will be May 4th, but that may be extended if we're able to get that bulk mailing coordinated, so we are ensuring that we're reaching as many families as possible. And then our plans, depending on if we're able to keep May 4th as our date, we'll do our lottery on May 8th and notify families shortly thereafter regarding their status, if they were either accepted into the program or if they're on a wait list. Additionally, we are still in the process of planning our career recruitment fair, which is scheduled for May 25th. There were a couple organizations noted in my board report, and I just want to share the updates to that list. Organizations have until May 1st to RSVP, so we'll be doing some targeted outreach as well. But already coming, we have representatives from the National Guard, the Marines, Ellenville Hospital, Stockade Works, Medlines, Carpenter's Local 279, Ellenville First Aid and Rescue, Bruin Medical Partners, Local Electriations 320, and the Ulster County Office of Employment. So I'll continue to update the board on the participation in that event, and after May 1st, we'll be sending home a formalized letter to the students and parents, so they're aware of what organizations and businesses will be here. And lastly, summer learning opportunities are under coordination, so we'll be hosting academic summer school for our secondary students at Rondow. More information will be coming out of the student support office as we round out the school year, and our Boost Academy will be here on campus for our K-6 students, July 10 through August 11th, and they're in the process of, teachers are in the process of making recommendations, and we'll be getting notification out to parents regarding the program.
Thank you. Move on to personnel resolutions for this evening under 6.1. Final recommendation, superintendent schools be resolved that Jade Roth be appointed for U.S. History Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55 per hour work, not to a
not to exceed two hours per week, effective April 19 through June 13, 2023.
So moved.
Moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved the appointment of Susan Burns, Human Resource Specialist, be made permanent following successful probationary period, effective April 26, 2023.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that Nicole Ordner's request for an unpaid leave of absence be granted, effective April 17 through January 31, 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Be resolved that superintendent of schools authorized to approve up to 15 hours of professional development for teachers who participated in the personalized learning, professional development in accordance with the proposal attached. Payments shall be made in accordance with the ETS/RPA Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit and funded by federal funds.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved the Elementary Basketball Intramurls Program 2022-23 school year be extended for an extra week at a rate of $47 per hour work.
So moved.
Moved. Seconded, discussion.
Where do we put this? I'm sorry.
So 6.5.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Adopt BOSI's budget. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that the Board of Cooperative Educational Services Administration budget in the amount of $6,718,295 be approved for the '23-'24 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.1. Resolve that the three-year term Ulster BOSI Seat Number 1 Allenville be filled by nominee Marla Kaplan of Allenville, New York.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resolve the three-year term Ulster.
Motion to move 8.2 through 8.4.
Seconded.
Yeah. Motion, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Student IEPs. Be resolved, the attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are 23.
Move the list as presented.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resolve that the Envision Math program be adopted for grades K through six for the '23-'24 school year. Be further resolved that the textbooks supporting materials be purchased using funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act in an amount not to exceed $108,814 as approved by the New York State Education Department.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. John?
Yeah, I think that's a big number, but the fact that Mrs. I said this would get us through K through six, and if it works out as well as she hopes it does, then I think it'd be nice to get off of that state list we've been on for a couple of years. So I think it's a good thing, and I truly hope that it works out well.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 9.1. Resolve the '23-'24 school calendar be adopted as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Board members, mark your calendars for the next meeting, which is May 9th. Also, be aware that starting May 9th, you'll start to see we have about 500 IEPs that need to be reviewed, and we're going to be dividing them up. And we're going to start with about 100 and, so 100 and change at each meeting going forward. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second? Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? We're adjourned.